Call to order the meeting of the Charlestown City Council is April 8th, 6:30 PM. Welcome everyone out. We'll begin by rising if you'll please join me in saying the place of allegiance.
United States of America, and to our holy Father, and to our Lord and our God, and to the people, the living, the dead, and the just for all.
Thank you. I believe our at work complement states you come to going to lead us in an invitation.
Yeah, let's pray. Lord, we just come to you tonight so grateful for the Easter season we just had. God, we thank you for your only son, Jesus, that you sent not only to die on the cross, but to raise again three days later. God, ask that you be with everybody that's in this room tonight. Lord, guide us, let us seek your wisdom. And Lord, we're just so grateful to live in the greatest country in the world, in one of the greatest cities in the state of Indiana. God be with us tonight, we thank you so much. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please, just for the record, thank you here. District one, Bo Bertram.
Here.
District two, Rupi Jackson.
Here.
District three, BJ Steele.
Here.
District four, Brian Hester.
Here.
And of course, that was JT Cox.
Here.
Let the record show that Deputy Officer Mayor Hodges is present and Hall of Clark Treasurer Donnie Puma, City Attorney Nancy Weber, and Council Attorney Michael Gillenwater. First up, we have approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to do that.
I'd like to add something to it. Will we make the motion and then add it?
You're welcome to make it.
I'd like to just add something to it to talk about the credit card resolution.
A new resolution?
No, it's an old one. The old credit card resolution, 2009 R9.
Okay, so there's been a recommendation to amend the agenda and add a credit card conversation about a credit card resolution. What's the regulation number?
2009 R9.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve that amended agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by JT Cox, is there a second?
Say.
Is that Brian?
Yes.
Seconded by Brian Hester. Need additional discussion or changes? All in favor of approving the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Our standing business, we've all been provided a copy of the prior meeting minutes from March 1st, our current claims and our payroll allowance docket from March 1st to April 2nd. I'll entertain a motion to approve those items.
Make the motion.
Motion made by BJ Steele, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rupi Jackson. Need discussion or questions on those items? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the three items, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. We have a public comment period. Considering the governor's executive order, I have three that we received electronically. I believe there's one in person.
You said that, you started looking for dad. My name is Ed Byers. These are my views, my views only, and I believe these figures to be true. 1136 Main Street is my address. Makes me a resident, taxpayer, and ratepayer to the city of Charlestown. I'm one of 2,500 ratepayers for the sewer. Out of those 2,500 ratepayers, should you propose and pass for a sewer board, we will be the smallest sewer board in the state. By state law, ratepayers have to pay for this utility. I have found zero ratepayers that are in favor of the sewer board. I estimate the cost to be $150,000 a year if we model it as Jeffersonville has. In 10 years, that'll be $1.5 million on the backs of 2,500 people before the actual construction costs actually start. 67 minutes of the video of the Jeff Council and their sewer board, a very dysfunctional one at that, resulted in me finding out that they have seven months without a resolution for their needed rate increases. 14 years that they've been under consent decrees with the United States government, the EPA. The Jeff Sewer Board during that meeting announced that their capacity raised from 60% to 75% in a three-week period without any major construction. Now there's talk of a sewer ban in Jeffersonville. $6,600 a year are what we pay each of you to be our council members. If you work five hours a month, that's $110 an hour that we pay you for your job. It's point two miles, two tenths of a mile, from 62 and 3 to the sewer plant. Zero council members have made that trip to investigate this matter. We have two common aspects between the Jeff Sewer Board and Charlestown. The first is you're designated appointee, William Segasere. He was the head of the plant here for at least 10 years and allowed it deteriorate to its current state. The other one is Michael Gillenwater, your attorney and the Jeff Sewer Board attorney. In the years of 2016 to 2019 inclusive, he was paid $705,759 by the city of Charlestown. That comes out to a yearly average of $176,439. The Chief Justice of the Indiana Supreme Court during those four years was only paid $167,500.
$300.
That is a 320.65% increase for a part town legal job. This isn't meant to disparage any person or but to eliminate the poor spending decisions by former and current officials in the city of Charlestown. The last one I'll leave you with is 31 months. That's the time to the next election. Democrats, Republicans, and independents are watching.
We received three public comments.
Can I address them?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I have been to the sewer department.
Yes.
I have sat down there and he made the statement that no one has been there.
Not this year.
I sit down there with Jorge and JTL and Mike Perry, so that's inaccurate.
Okay.
Not this year.
We received three by electronic mail. The first is from Barbara Meredith at 181st Street. Again, I'm just reading the email, so I have a copy to get to the Clark Treasurer's office for file. She says, "Hello, to all, I want to make a request to all members of the council to please consider negotiating with the mayor to come up with a more sensible and less costly plan for the sanitation department. I'm sure that she will go above and beyond to make sure to protect the interest of the taxpayer and get the needest upgrades completed at the smallest cost to the taxpayers. I would hope that is your goals as well. If you vote to make this costly extra layer of bureaucracy, that will tell the citizens that you value extra power and control more than you value protecting the taxpayer. Please think independently and clearly before you make a big mistake. Regards, Barbara Meredith." The second was received by Ellen Keith at 101 Clark Road. "We as citizens and taxpayers should have a say in what the council is doing after all they are supposed to represent the people. We do not need a new sewer board. Many of the decisions made by some of these council members and their overpriced attorney have cost the city and its taxpayers millions of dollars and some people the places they called home for many years. Sincerely, Ellen Keith." And then finally, one was received from Doug Combs at 259 Jefferson Street. "Please do not vote in favor of a sewer board. I am totally against a sewer board." And that will be at the next council meeting in April. Thank you very much, Doug Combs. Moving on in the agenda, we have comments from our legislative vice advisor, Ethan
Good evening. I'd like to see one of the updates for the month of March over the last month or so. First, I'd like to recognize the juniors at Charlestown High School for getting the Indiana Association of School Principals Rising Stars. This is a non-competitive recognition program designed to honor high school juniors for their academic achievements. The four students that were recipients of this reward are Logan Brown, Sadie Go Decker, Aralyn Johnson, and Trinity Murphy. So congratulations to those four students for making the award. For the first time, Charlestown High School had a student get to semi-state for bowling. It was Chandler Bird, and congratulations to him for making it to semi-state for that. For the spring sports are starting, so for those, you can go to the Charlestown High School website or the WPMQ Facebook page to find the schedules for the spring sports and make it to some of the events or to try and join one of the teams if you're a student. Then on the topic of the spring sports, I'd like to have a huge shout out to Lyric Steele. She's a ninth grader at Charlestown High School who had a record-breaking time on the 100-meter dash. The record was set 24 years ago, being ran at 13.1 and Lyric ran it in 12.6 seconds, so she beat it by half a second. And she also broke the 200-meter dash record, running it in 26 seconds flat. For colleges, Deek Brown signed his letter of intent to play football at Hanover College. Matthew McCoy signed his letter of intent to play baseball at Hanover College. And then Skylar Cochrane signed her letter of intent to play basketball at Lion College in Arkansas. I'd like to finish up by giving a shout out to everybody involved with the esports program as that started off in the over spring break. There's a lot of work behind closed doors being done to make this happen, and I have to admit, it probably would not have happened if Alphacity's Communications Director Riley. We worked as a team getting the entire program up and going for the first time putting an esports program together for Charlestown. It was just, I feel personally like it was a success, and I want to acknowledge our winners from that tournament, which were Brothers Joshua and Jared Nelson. They were the sons of Brandon and Loney Nelson, and they won the tournament. They will be receiving, I think, a shirt or a tee-shirt with the logo as a reward for winning. Riley and I also worked out some kinks and brainstormed some other ideas in case the city would like to sponsor an esports program for the town to continue it off and keep running it. We did a lot of interviews promoting it, and I feel like esports is inclusive for those unable to actually do sports, and I feel like it would be a great idea to continue it and make it a success. It's been growing, it's like in competitive sports now, and colleges are adopting it as like their leagues of sports where they have full-on teams that they're giving scholarships to students to participate and play in for their colleges. And I'd like to thank Mayor Hodges, the Parks Department, and Riley for helping me try something new in the community in running this. Are there any questions?
Hey, nice job, buddy. Good job.
Ernold, anything?
Thank you.
Congrats to all the winners of that school. I'm a little close to home. Very good.
I have to say, that happened to your daughter.
Right.
Yep, I sat in the stands and watched it. Organizing race between BJ and Lyric.
There you go.
You make me look bad.
Oh, good. Okay, mayor's comments, nothing major, just to let everybody know in case they missed some of the announcements, the Saturday on the square has restarted. I'm hearing rumors that the weather's supposed to be really nasty this Saturday though, so I doubt they'll be out. Just a pop-up in the market, and of course, the Saturday's being long. Usually gets kicked off around 10 and goes until about noon. Car shows are resuming on the square as well, for those that are interested in the car shows. So on the second and third Friday, we have two individual groups that have those. They start up around 5 o'clock in the evening and go into us, like it's morning and goes Rupi, were you gonna do your mouth for smile?
Yeah, go ahead.
So also, on the 16th, we have the mouths for smiles coming back to do dental work for, is it for adults?
For adult summer.
Okay, adult summer.
Still have slots if they want to contact me.
Okay.
I have some slots available.
And that'll be the 16th, and they set up in the morning and go until around 2 or 3, so lots of stuff happening on the square. It's a good thing, we put the picnic tables back out, people have been using them. Also, as you notice, we're all still masked up in the square, so the Board of Works did approve yesterday, we're gonna keep city facilities with masks for at least another month. Just kind of want to make sure that we're being extra cautious in keeping everybody safe as we came, so we're glad to be back in person. We're gonna bear with the mask for a little bit longer. That's all I had. Moving down for council comments next. None?
I have a question.
Okay.
I've got about three or four calls this week about animal control, that we have stopped animal control.
We have not stopped animal control. What we did was, we did revise and say that from now on, I don't know at what point we began taking in wildlife, but we are not doing wildlife calls. We were losing a lot of our traps. We were running them out, not getting them back. They were disappearing. So wild animals, we're actually referring to local nuisance animal control removal. We are still doing domestic dogs and cats.
Okay, yes, thank you.
There is no public hearing. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions, first up is ordinance 2021 OR 3, establishing a sanitary board for its second and final reading. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by JT Cox, is there a second? A second. Seconded by Rupi Jackson. Discussion?
I've got a couple little things to say. I gave this folks tonight a lot of thought and was thinking if we had a sewer board in place years ago, we wouldn't be in this position we are now, which is way behind. And I've reached out to a lot of folks, including three former city council members, and the majority of them thought the board would be a good idea.
I have, I'd like to say something about it. Establishing a sewer board is not something that I take lightly. I visited Jeff's Sewer Board in January of 2020, right when, right after I was elected into office. I wanted to educate myself on the workings and the expense of a sewer board before trying to implement one and making that decision for the city. I needed to weigh out the pros and cons of it. I think most of us went and sat down with them individually, and me myself, I thought it would be advantageous just to let the mayor get comfortable, familiar with the sewer department and how it works, and to educate herself, and to see what solutions we'd come up with. Through the year, I asked numerous times, you know, how's the process going, was being looked at, and I was told it would happen, and when it was time for us to be brought into it, we would be brought into it. Fast forward to November, when I went to a funeral and I was approached by a city employee and myself and another councilman, and we were asked to please do not send or sell our sewers to Jeffersonville. Well, to say I was taken aback is an understatement because that's the first I've heard about that. So I did make a few calls, and I understand that maybe there was a discussion going on about that, and we as a council did not know that. So fast forward to February, and we were asked to come to an executive session to talk about the development in River Ridge. And in that meeting, it turned out I felt like to be about the sewers and the sewers in River Ridge and our expansion of the sewer system. In this meeting, it was presented some options to repair in the sewer system and updating it, and the sewer rate increases that would need to be implemented. Those, to me, were staggering numbers. The cheapest one was $60, and the most expensive was $125 with, I think, a $120 one, I don't want to misquote, $95 and 80 cents one if we started sending our sewer to Jeff. That's not including the $40 credit that taxes taxpayers and the other taxpayers are getting on your water bill or sewer bill right now from the sale of the water company. And that $40 credit rolls off next January. So if you add $60 with another 40, that's $100 to $165 sewer rate increase on our constituents. I got to talking to some of my neighbors, I know my 80-year-old neighbor down the street. She's gonna have to choose if it goes up between $100 and $160, if she's going to pay her sewer bill or she's gonna buy groceries and get her medicine. So that's when me, myself, I thought it is time that we at least start talking about the sewer, the sewer board. In the last meeting, it was stated that we are ready to begin the negotiations with the council to get things fixed, and I am here to advocate for our customers. And I do not doubt that. I do not doubt that the mayor has the best interest of Charlestown in mind, that what she thinks she's doing is the right thing, and I'm not saying it's not. But I'm sorry, $100 to $165 is not acceptable to me. We owe it to the city to be more transparent about that big of a rate increase because that's the first we'd heard about it. I'm saying that we need a board of professionals who can help us do what is physically, fiscally, and economically right for our residents. The mayor will be on the board, she will serve as the chairman of the board, and it will be with professionals who know about sewer and sewer plants. We looked at 47 cities with a population of 6,000 to 15,000 people. There are eight that have sewer utility boards. That being said though, I'm not worried about other cities. I'm worried about Charlestown and our taxpayers, and that's where I've come to the decision that I think we need a sewer board. There's been touted expenses, it was just said it's gonna be $150,000 a year. I don't know where those numbers are coming from. I don't know where those, part of the mayor's salary is already paid out of the sewer department for $12,272 a month. We paid a engineer $40,000 from the sewer department last year, and last month, we paid him $3,538 in March alone. The sewer board will have an engineer, a licensed engineer, who is very familiar with our system and the needs of our system. Him and the other board member have agreed to serve on the board for $500 a month. That's to help the mayor run a multimillion dollar company for $500 a month. That's a total of $12,000 a year. Now, I think some of that will come out of the $40,000 that we paid for the other engineer last year. I'm not saying that we need to get rid of the engineer. We need him, and we need him working with the engineer that we are looking to put on the sewer board. I, there is also a proposal that if we redesign and have to design our sewer plant, that I guess it's done in a formula that about a million dollars expense will go for an engineer to design it. I don't know, but I feel assured that with another engineer on board, working with that engineer, that's gonna save us hundreds of thousands of dollars. I can't imagine that it's gonna cost that much with two engineers working on it. I've only had six residents that's reached out to me or talked to me. I've had one send me an email, and that was Ms. Meredith, I got the same email. I had someone else send me a message on Facebook, and she said she didn't know that if she was for this. And after I explained to her my reasoning for it, most of it being we need professionals on board and we need, I can't pass on that big of a sewer rate increase to her because she's about to retire, and she said, "No, I don't know that I'd be able to do that." She said that kind of changed her thought process about it. Other five people come up to me when I was out in public, and they were in favor of it. They thought it would help the city and give the mayor an extra layer of help that she could use. And then I had two residents reach out to me and ask me, tell me they work for it and they want it to be on the sewer board. I've had sewer employees reach out to me and ask me if they're gonna lose their job. And absolutely not, they're still employees of the city. They get paid through the city, their insurance is through the city, nothing changes in that. So that was a big concern with them, and I let them know that that has not even, that they will not lose their job. I don't know why they would lose their job. It's been a long process, this is not something that we've just talked about in a month and decided to do. This has been a long process that I have thought about, I have prayed about, and I'm worried about, and I think at this point, this is why I'm voting for the sewer board. And I want my grandkids to not have to worry about this in 20 years because we have got to tackle this problem now. River Ridge has nowhere to go but Charlestown, and they're not coming, they're here, and we've got to get ahead of this, or we're gonna lose out.
I'd like to respond to some of those things, Mr. Jackson. A lot of information in that statement. As far as the timeline from when the council was brought into information about the sewer department, I had one year. In that year, we did a full facility review done by JTL. We did a full operation review done by Midwest Environmental, and we did a full rate analysis done by Baker Tilly. Those three groups are some of the highest-rated ranked and respected professionals in their industries in this area. It takes time to get those studies together. Keep in mind that we also, because of my advocacy, have been granted a $575,000, 30% initial design on a new wastewater plant at River Ridge. That's $575,000 coming in to assist with the building. It has taken us some time to get the information together to bring it to the council. I was truthful when I said that as soon as I had everything together, I would bring it to you, and I did. It was the very next day when I got the call to tell me that you decided to do a sewer board. So you might have talked to people in advance about the sewer board, about their sewer board, but as far as the decision process, there was one day between when we had the meeting and I gave you the information and when you announced that you were going to do a sewer board. At no point when I gave you the numbers, the raw numbers from Baker Tilly's rate assessment, did I say that those were the rates that had to happen. What Baker Tilly did was they presented all possible options. One of those options was what if Charlestown got out of the wastewater treatment and paid someone else to treat, not sell the utility, but to pay them to treat it. We treat it ourselves, we pay ourselves to treat it, what if we paid someone else to treat it? It was one of five options, those options being do nothing, which still resorted in a rate increase because we haven't had a rate increase in over 12 years. In fact, we made less money in 2019 than we did in 2007 because of our rates. So the first option was do nothing. The second option was fix the plant but not expand it. The third option was fix and expand the plant where it is. The fourth option was build a brand-new larger plant somewhere else, and the fifth option was pump it if possible to another municipality, with most logical being Jeff because it's close. Those are the five options that you were presented with before the very next day deciding to do a sewer board. At that meeting, I explained when I gave you those rates, and I've explained to at least two of you since then, those rate assessments, those projected numbers, have to be based on the existing ratepayers. Charlestown's wastewater system is very different than others that have sewer boards, in that only a small portion of our population, there's approximately 1,000 households in our community that do not use our wastewater. Most places, their entire population uses their wastewater. Jeffersonville, for instance, has their whole population plus some outside of there who use their wastewater. The rate structure though, when they do the rate assessment, for bonding reasons, has to only consider the existing number of ratepayers. So it's always going to look higher than it would actually need to be, and these are things I've explained. I told you at the meeting, these numbers are shocking. I want you to spend some time with them. I want you to look over this information, and we can begin to have open conversations about how to move forward. We didn't get to have those conversations because the very next meeting, before I could even give you the update in March, but I promised you, you put forward the sewer board. I still believe that the Board of Works- I still believe that the board of works through me and with you can solve our problems. Especially since one large user in River Ridge, one example that we were given of a large user, could net as much as ten million dollars in tap-in fees alone. That's a game changer for building our system. So no one has ever said that those rates that you saw in those numbers had to be implemented. It's like buying a gift for a friend. If you've got somebody that's having a birthday party, and you've got people who wanna kick in, you're gonna buy a hundred-dollar gift. And you've only got two people kicking in to buy the gift, they both gotta pay fifty bucks. If you've got four friends who can buy the hundred-dollar gift, everybody only has to pay twenty-five. That's our rate situation. We only have twenty-five hundred rate payers, so they pay more for the more rate payers we add to the system. These are your kids. No one ever said those rates had to go that high. At this point, though, I value your argument, Ms. Jackson, about protecting the rate payers. But adding a sewer board at this point would be adding cost would be like having to pay someone a commission to buy that hundred-dollar gift. So now instead of everybody, four people paying twenty-five bucks, they pay thirty because they have to pay the commission to make it happen. I'm against adding expenses where they don't need to be because I know that we can work together to come up with a solution.
And I believe the expenses are already in there. We've already been paying them. We're just gonna redistribute them.
I can tell you, having managed this utility for the past month, and I'm happy to sit down with you and show you all of the financials, that's not possible. The five hundred dollars that you've quoted as far as paying them five hundred dollars a month, that's not a thousand dollars a month. It's fifteen. Because as the mayor, sitting on that board, I would also get that five hundred dollars. I don't want it. I don't need it. But I would have to get it because that's the rule. So that number goes to eighteen thousand a year, plus an attorney, plus an attorney, plus a recording secretary, and engineering fees. The engineering candidate that you wanna put on this board has previously made decisions that were not in the best interest of this utility.
Under the advisement
No.
of someone else?
No.
Yes.
In March...
You can only do what he has advised to do.
Ruthie. Sorry, Ms. Jackson. I'm sorry. I wanna be respectful.
But that's my name. It's okay.
I know, but I'm trying to...
It's okay.
I attended every board of works meeting for three years before I decided, before I was elected mayor. At the March fourth, two thousand nineteen board of public works meeting, the engineer that you wanted to put on this board was talking about the phosphorus issue that was identified when we got our new permit for the wastewater plant earlier that year, around February. Our phosphorus was too high. We had to treat it. He, at that meeting, came up with a solution to treat it chemically. And the minutes are recorded, and the meeting is... there's audio of the meeting if so desired. He was asked, argued by Mr. Givlinwater, who was the attorney at the time of the board, are you using rare earths, the chemicals? And that engineer said, "No, I have found a cheaper solution, and we'll use that chemical instead." That chemical was Aqua Hawk. That chemical is not approved for use by the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. And so for almost a year, that engineer, in his own decision, was pumping an unapproved chemical into the Ohio River under our watch. Not my watch, but the city's watch. I found that out when I went to a personal visit with... to the Indiana Department of Environmental Management on March tenth of two thousand twenty. We've changed it to rare earth. We put it back where it was. We reapplied for the phosphorus permit that had been denied because of, among other things, the potential issues with this particular chemical. And I'm happy to say that we have received our final permit and have approval to move forward with the treatment. All of that happened with our existing engineer and under the management of the board of public works. The system was mismanaged before. The current status quo has put it in a better place. There's simply no reason to add extra cost and change the status quo when it's working, especially putting someone on the board making decisions who made a cheaper alternative decision at the risk of getting us in trouble. At the time, we had to reapply for that permit. We were also found that there was an element of nitrogen element, that they were not testing on the influent, the water that comes into the plant. We were placed on notice that that was in noncompliance. I'm quite surprised we haven't had a regulatory visit, but we risked being... having a regulatory action taking against us. We fixed it very quickly. As soon as we found out, we are testing for that chemical now, and we are in compliance and have received our permit. The system is being managed better than it has in several years. Having a sewer board complicates the management of the city. I've explained why I'm opposed to it for the cost. I've explained why I'm opposed to it for the added layer of bureaucracy, something I think that the council should consider. I don't know if you've talked to any of the employees. I don't know if you've sat down and said, "Hey, how do you feel about this?" I don't know if you've talked to our current wastewater operator and asked him his opinion on this. Be great resources to ask. When I say that Charleston is too small for this level of bureaucracy, I mean it. We have four street employees that do all of our paving and sidewalk work. We have four parks people who mow all of our grass. We have three wastewater employees and four sanitation workers. We are so small that since all of those units are managed by the board of public works, they're managed on the day-to-day by the mayor, from the executive office. That means that I have some employees who pull double duty. One of our wastewater operators also does general control and gets paid to do so. One of our wastewater employees often gets pulled over to help with Christmas and to help with things over at the family activity park. Adding this layer jeopardizes our ability to do those things and adds to the potential cost, not just to the rate payers, because now the sewer board will be... now the sewer department will be functioning as a completely separate unit governed by this new board. I cannot guarantee that the same authority would be given in that board, especially when it's being created under contentious circumstances.
You're gonna be the chairman, so that will be your decision.
That will be the decision of the board. It's a vote.
It's done in other cities.
In other cities, they have budgets that allow them to operate in silos like that. In New Albany, for instance, they do all their water and wastewater operating alone. You don't see a wastewater or water employee going and doing other things. They're big enough to do that. We're not. And so it's going to complicate and change the way that we do daily business. For instance, right now, our park staff cut grass at the lift stations. The sewer board ordinance, the statute, says that everything has to be paid. Everything done for the sewer department has to be paid for out of the sewer fund. This is adding and complicating a layer that we don't need right now and the added expense in a system that is working well.
Can I speak?
Yes.
So I just had a couple thoughts and things I've written down, and I think there's common ground. I think everybody can agree the facilities need to be updated. We need better wastewater facilities. I think, given the growth that we have in town and the potential growth we have coming, most people would agree that we need to increase that capacity. To achieve the improvements and increase capacity, it's gonna take a group effort to come up with the absolute best solution. I'm thinking of those twenty-five hundred sewer customers, of which I am one. We leave no stone unturned. I know this has impact, one way or the other, it's gonna impact the city for years to come. At the executive session, the numbers that were given, I felt were just way too high. Mary said tonight that you gave us the numbers as soon as you had them. The Baker Tilly report is dated December thirtieth, two thousand twenty. I was given them on February twenty-second, so almost two months after. JTL and Baker Tilly, I understand, have a very high reputation. And you said you were given all the possible options that were come up with over a year worth of studies and reports and meetings. So the numbers that I was given is if an average bill is thirty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents just to maintain our current equipment, which is crumbling, was gonna result in a thirty-nine percent increase that would take your thirty... if you had a thirty-five-dollar bill, would take it to forty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. Again, I think we can all agree we can't just maintain what we have. Improvements without expansion, so not increasing our capacity, would be a hundred and forty-seven percent rate increase for current for current customers. And again, these were numbers given to me. So now your thirty-five-dollar bill is eighty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. Okay? Improvements with expansion with what JTL did and the study Baker Tilly did, which I think we all can agree that's what needs... improvement with expansion in some capacity is what's needed, was gonna result in a two hundred and fifty-six percent rate increase. So now your thirty-five-dollar and forty-eight-cent bill is gonna be a hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-two cents. Those were the initial three options that, to my understanding, which explained to me that JTL took to Baker Tilly. It wasn't until seeking some outside resources and doing some brainstorming, which we need to do, that it was suggested possibly building pump stations and lift stations, pump it into Jeff, have them treat it, and send it back. That was a hundred and seventy percent increase. See, now your thirty-five-dollar bill is now a ninety-five-dollar and eighty-cent bill. And it was shot. I think we all agree, like, those were shocking numbers, but those were the numbers that were presented to us. So I think there are solutions out there. I'm not an expert on sewers, but I know that there are people that are. And I am. I wanna work together to find those solutions, but the options, all the possible options that the mayor said tonight, they're not viable options for the wastewater customers in town.
It's very important to note and to repeat that those numbers are based only on the existing customers. That assumes multiple assumptions. One, it assumes that only those twenty-five hundred rate payers would be funding those improvements, and that's not the case. We know that we're gonna have people building in River Ridge. And like I said, one example given when they ran the numbers resulted in a four hundred and forty thousand dollar a month rate, you know, revenue from a significant user would give a four hundred and forty thousand dollars a month in revenue and potential ten million dollars in capacity fees, okay? So those numbers you're quoting, I don't wanna scare our rate payers. We know those numbers are high. We know they're unattainable, and they're unrealistic. That's why we needed to begin to have conversations because we can't do that, obviously. So I gave them to you with the caveat that that's only based on the twenty-five hundred customers we have. We know we're gonna get...
What are the numbers gonna be?
They have no way to project that. Unfortunately, they have no way to project that.
And there's a lot of gifts in that. Gifts they deal, gifts they have.
Right. But no one has said at any point that that's what we wanted to charge people. It was, this is what the numbers said, that if the people that are on the system right now had to fund it, this is what it would be. It also doesn't take any consideration, any investment from grants for every fifteen... what was the number? For every... it's in that report that you look at the bottom. For every five million dollars that we got in assistance, it would reduce the rate by fifteen dollars.
Right.
Right? So there are grants that can be applied for. There's federal money coming down the pipeline. The county, you know, the city has resources, financial resources from the sale of the water utility that could be invested in this to have offset and buy that down for our customers. There are ways that we could reduce those numbers for customers to buy us time to get more people into the system to reduce it. So please let's not scare people into thinking that those are...
And I don't wanna scare... I'm... These aren't numbers that I just pulled out of the air. These are numbers that, for, you said, over a year you guys dug into, and this, after a year of everybody putting their heads together and the groups that we had, this was the numbers that we're come up with. What the mayor was referring to, there is a note for every five million dollars of cash on hand that is applied to the cost. There's potentially, the average would be for options two, three, and four. So that's the improvements with expansion, improvements without expansion, and building the lift, pumping it to Jeffersonville to be treated. Instead of paying eighty-seven dollars, you would only pay seventy-two. Instead of paying a hundred and twenty-six dollars, you would only pay a hundred and eleven. And for only... instead of paying ninety-five, you would pay eighty if the city had five million dollars cash on hand to apply. And again, that's a big... that's a... that's a big ask. To add five million dollars and continue to see that hike. And again, I know that there are grants, and there's potential for other... That's not concrete yet right now, and I'm not comfortable saying if this happens and if that happens, and it might not be that way, and hopefully we get this. I'm not... I'm not comfortable with it. That's all I've got.
Other?
Yeah. So pretty much most of these projects are long-term projects, right? Not only in how long it's gonna take to pay for them, but how long it's actually gonna take to design and build, right? It's a long process, a lot of... A lot of management to it and a lot of time to administer it over all these plans and get all the permitting and get grants, and there's a lot of moving parts, right? So I view it as it's help for you to go after all of these grants to manage a project. It's a huge project. I don't know how many people have ran a project of that magnitude, but it's huge. And it's... And it's a very important project, and it's a project that, you know, there's some of these options, I think, where it'd be a three-year timeframe to build completely. I don't know if I'm gonna be here then, but this is... could be a way that we're setting everything in motion. That's one limiting factor. A lot of times with government is, you know, like you said, thirty-something months until reelection time. Well, a lot of that's how a lot of government projects get mandated over time to try to save money every time. And that's where we're at, where we're at today, I think. So, you know, this is just kind of another step to help steer us in the right direction because this is a big ship. All these are big costs. So it's only, you know, some of these costs, like it's a... It was a total of like twenty-five million dollars for one of the options. So if we do a sewer board, you're talking about like point zero zero three of a percent of the total cost. So to help steer the ship and run it in that direction and also give you time to do all of your other duties. You know, it's a busy job. So in my opinion, it's just adding help with experienced people.
To ease your mind on the timeline of it, in conversations with many of the board members, we seem to be leaning towards the idea that our favorite option would be to maintain our own wastewater plant and build a larger, you know, to do an expansion. Thankfully, we do have River Ridge, which has agreed to pay for a thirty percent build design, which is fantastic. And the numbers given by JTL engineers say that we could have that rebuild done in about thirty months. So you're looking at the end of two thousand twenty-three that we would be online, which is pretty... I mean, that's a pretty impressive timeline, and it's certainly doable. If we have to stop, rewind, and catch a sewer board up to where we are now, you're adding to that timeline.
You just had your... the board of works just started in January, right? So, I mean, to take no experience, to take people that are experiencing this, I don't know that there's as much catching up to do.
And I'll remind you the report that I just gave you on one of the people that you want to appoint and their experience level. That should be very concerning. Even if you want a sewer board, the fact that we were held in noncompliance on that person's decision should be problematic.
And I wasn't around for...
You also have a resident who has reached out with substantial experience, who has said that he will happily serve on the board and serve for free, so...
I wasn't aware of any of that.
That is something I think that the council, should you decide to adopt this, should consider.
Well, and that's something that we can always, you know, look at, but that's, you know, that doesn't change the course of needing something to... change the, the course of needing something to be in place to help soothe our project through all the way and get the right option at the right budget and the right grants and the right cash reserves and everything that's gonna need to go into play to ultimately make this number work.
I, I'm on the same page as BJ. I think you're gonna, you want the best for the city, and I absolutely agree with that. I, I don't think that you're off the top of my sheet, I think you're, want the best for our city, best for our rate payers. But like BJ, I think the more eyes, the better. Baseball coach, I put a lineup out, and I have assistant coaches that go, hey, what about this option? And I will go, I didn't think about that. JTL is great, they do an amazing job. But maybe if you ask them, I'm sure that they would tell you that it'd be also nice to have another set of eyes to look at it in a different way. It's nothing, it's, it's not about you, it's, I think you're gonna do a great job. I think you want the best for our city. But I think more eyes on it, the better.
Other comments? There are no more discussions, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving ordinance 2021 OR 3 on its second and final reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, I will notify the council that, um, I don't know if in good conscience I can sign this ordinance because of the added cost that's going to be associated with this and the fact that I fundamentally believe that this is not in the best interest of our rate payers at this time. Um, I'm just giving you a heads up that if I should have decided to formally veto this, you will know within the 10 days, um, prescribed by ordinance for me to notify you that. I want, I want, I want a few days to think about this and consider everything that you have said tonight, um, which I appreciate you all, I appreciate you all providing your feedback.
We are, if I'm not mistaken, we're on a, could be on a type timeframe to get all this done.
I understand that. Like I said, it's a big decision, and I want a few days to think about whether I can sign this or not. Um, and then we had an amended agenda, and there was an item that, um, Councilwoman Jackson wanted to bring up, and it was involving Resolution 2009 OR 9. I'll give the floor to her for that discussion.
Um, in 2009, there was a credit card resolution made and then an amendment to it, and it just says that-
Do you have a copy of, of that for me?
I don't, I have it right here, but I don't have a copy of it. But, so, my concern is, it's been brought to my attention and the board's attention from the Clerk Treasurer that there have been, um, some issues with the credit card. So I'm here to ask that maybe, um, or recommend if the board so approves or the council so approves that you look at it and let us know how you plan to handle it from here forward. And, um, maybe make a, um, suggestion to the Board of Public Works that you amended that the invoices are turned in within a certain amount of time and, um, that are taken care of before the, um, credit card, um, invoice is paid. And, um, I'm just asking the, the board what they think about, the council what they think about, and if we can make that recommendation to you, then you can come back to us in May and tell us your plan or how you plan to work on that.
I don't need to, um, come back to you, I can tell you, I know exactly what you're referring to. Um-
Thank you.
Um, the issue at hand that's being alluded to is not anything scandalous. There were some receipts that were not turned in. The purchases were legitimate business purchases out of one of our departments. And those purchases are basically, they're subscription services for media tech subscriptions that help in our media management, okay? The receipts were not submitted for those purchases in a timely manner. I have, this is a personnel issue, but if you want to have an executive session, we can discuss, but it's something that cannot be discussed because it is a personnel issue in another session. However, I did notify the Clerk Treasurer a week ago that the issue had been resolved. A new level of internal controls have been put into place. A new system of tracking the invoices and requiring those invoices within the seven-day period has been put into place. All of the invoices have been identified and turned into the Clerk Treasurer's office. And the employee at question who was behind the missing invoices has received a disciplinary action. There's absolutely no reason to come back to you next month, the issue has been resolved.
I think, um, what Ruthie didn't say is, I think that that ordinance does need to be amended stage what I had just, um, given you. I think that would be good, except that it's policy. And if it doesn't get turned in before the building cycle, that the employee will be responsible for paying it. And this is kind of what I-
You.
Well, since that's kind of the system that we've already put into place, I'm happy to take it and, um, make that official, official policy, because that's essentially what we're doing. And the employee did pay, um, a personal check for the taxes that had been accrued during that period as well. So I mean, I have no problem making that formal policy. We've already adopted it in fixing the situation, so there's no reason why it can't be formal policy.
And we had the, uh, resolution that the Board of Public Works, I think it was good idea if we amended to protect the city.
That's perfectly fine. I'm happy to put that before the board's eye if you want.
You have worked with me, and I really do appreciate that.
Thank you.
I do, thank you.
So I just brought it to us with a little concern. It was a lot of invoices, I felt, some of them were to hit back to February of last year. And I just felt like the board, I don't want to talk to a few of them about it, I wanted it. That way, if something else happens, everybody's on the same page and knows what's going on.
Any other comments?
Is there a reason why this is not on Facebook live tonight?
Facebook's happening up. Um, Facebook has, was having, they were having a, a national outage. And so we decided to record it and post it later when we, that way we wouldn't be interrupted, sorry. That's why, that's why it's not being live. Yeah, Facebook is on, on the fritz. Um, people resorted to Twitter because they couldn't use Facebook. Facebook is down, everybody breathe a sigh of relief, Facebook's down.
Hey, I do wanna encourage everybody, uh, full, uh, I know, uh, it was spoken about earlier with spring sports, but they're in full swing. Facilities look absolutely amazing up at the high school, if you guys have been up there, just check it out. Um, I think our home opener's, uh, might have been the biggest crowd we've ever had at a home baseball game, and the students were talking about it the next day, they were excited to play in front of people. Been playing any, anything, period, but been playing in front of a, a crowd, uh, a special forum. Um, and then opening day for Little League is this Saturday, and those fields look absolutely amazing. Uh, the Little League board's been doing an awesome job of getting those fields ready. Uh, even with all the rain they had, I'm heading over there, uh, pick up my son from his practice tonight because they've done such a great job. They can take the, the weather and still have practices and games, so that starts, uh, this Saturday, and they pretty much run all day, so if you just swing by, it doesn't cost anything to come um, for the Little League games, but grab your hot dog and, and hang out and cheer on some kids, it's, it's a good time.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, may I, my BJ Cox, is there a second? Second, if I BJ still in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We will have the meeting uploaded as soon as we are sure that Facebook is-